Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Camden's Select Board meeting for September 17th, 2019. We want to get into our agenda, and our first agenda item, as always, is do we have any public input on non-agenda items? Not seeing any hands, we'll move on to Select Board reports. So Taylor, you would like to start or not?
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay. Allison, would you like to contribute some reports?
Sure. I guess I'll do it without photos this time. I was really thrilled to see the trash cans. I think I counted at least four new trash cans in town parking lots. So thank you to Public Works. And I think we're still missing one in terms of town-owned parking lots in this lot here out front. But I'm sure someday soon. It really does make it a lot easier when you see trash just to be able to pick it up, because otherwise you just have trash in your purse all the time. And I found myself, when I'm walking with my dog, it's like, well, you know, I could pick that up, but there's only so much I can fit in my pockets. And then it's... So the new trash cans are great. I was also really happy to see that the Knox Mill parking lot had been cleaned up a bit, and also that the river walk, the section along the... behind the skate park is really transformed. I hadn't been there since... I checked on it a little bit during the course of the construction, but, I mean, it dead ends, and that's frustrating to some... to everyone, really. But it's really nice out behind the line. That was a... he did a really great job on that. That was a big task. So... and it opens up into the skate park a little bit now in the teen center, and it's kind of a continuous thing. It's quite nice. And what's that?
Skate park.
Skate park.
You said...
Oh, yeah. We've really extended it.
Oh, no. Jeff, I heard state park, too.
Well, I was... yeah, I'm a mumbling and a fast talker sometimes. And then the other thing that we've been working on a lot over at the landfill, micro solid waste takes up a fair amount of our time, Bob and my and Audra's time. But the pump has stopped working, the Liche pump. And so that's a problem, because if it gets high enough, it pollutes Lily Pond and the flow surrounding groundwater. So we've been monitoring that. There does... there is a plan in place, but it's been, as it coincides with having a new manager there, and trying to bring somebody, no matter how good a new manager is, there's just a lot of history with that particular site and being a 200 to 300-foot quarry filled with trash. So we've been spending a lot of time on that, and we have the new manager. I don't know if... has everybody had a chance to meet Baridi? If you get a chance...
He's gone away for one month now.
Yeah, today was his one-month anniversary. We met with Camden National Wealth Management about the landfill closure investments. Bob joined me for the... It's okay, Jenna's not interested in the micro solid waste investments. It's hard for any of us to be interested sometimes, but that is going well, and I guess that's it.
Ms. Jenna, would you like to... because I gave Mark a breather.
I'm trying to interrupt other people off my own.
Mark, do you want me to jump in? Mark, give you a second to breathe?
For a second, I'm just making a couple of...
Got some updates.
Well, let's go to Ms. Audra.
Sure. Okay. So I just received information from Doug Coombs, the project manager from MDOT, who's looking after the Main Street Drainage and Pedestrian Improvements Project on the contractor documents for the construction time period. So according to this, the project is going to begin on October 19th of 2020. The completion date is June 11th, 2021.
6:11?
What's that?
6:11?
Yes. Yep. And the following dates will be when there's a stop-work order. So November 25th, 2020, from noon until November 30th, 2020, at 6:00 a.m. due to Thanksgiving.
Right.
So Thursday, December 3rd at noon until Monday, December 7th at 6:00 a.m. due to Christmas by the Sea. Wednesday, December 23rd, noon until Monday, December 28th due to Christmas. Thursday, December 31st, noon until Monday, 6:00 a.m. due to New Year's Eve. Thursday, February 4th at 12:00 p.m., noon until Monday at 6:00 a.m. due to Toboggan Festival. And then Friday, May 28th, 2021, noon until June 1st at 6:00 a.m. due to Memorial Day.
Wow.
Which project is this again?
This is for the Main Street Drainage and Pedestrian Improvements.
Basically Elm Street.
Yep.
Okay, cool. So that's basically what you're saying, it's a almost eight-month project?
Yes. Yep.
When's the starting date again?
19th.
Yep, October 19th. And so there's another kind of, you know, provisions for the contractors, so they can only have one paving operation working at one time, excluding any handwork. They have to have advance notice of any night work, and it needs to be approved by their resident. So it's 48 hours advance notice for any night work. And the reason why they do that is the resident needs to give the town sufficient notice that there's going to be night paving going on. They can't schedule both day and night work within the same 24-hour period without private approval of the resident within a 48-hour period. And again, that's because they'd want to work with the town to minimize any disruption. They need to maintain two 11-foot-wide travel lanes along Route 1 at all times. They can reduce traffic to one 11-foot-wide lane of alternating traffic if there are crews are present and working along specific locations. And I'm not going to get into exactly where they are, but it's some of the heaviest traveled locations within the downtown along Main Street. And if they're going to be absent for the job site, they need to request 72 hours notice to be able to do that.
Interesting. They have to have one-way traffic control for some of that construction in certain segments, because the trench is going to be pretty big?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's got to have information.
Yeah. Is it normal to give us that much information?
I usually give them more. This is only preliminary. They're going to... I assume they will be notifying all of the bidding property owners.
Absolutely. That's their responsibility.
That's their responsibility.
They just wanted to... and I... so I can give approval for the town's approval to sign off on these documents, but I wanted to inform everyone and speak with the Select Board about it prior to, so you knew when the dates were.
Sure. Yeah, well, it was bad news. They haven't bid this yet. They won't bid it till next year.
Right.
That should be interesting. Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead.
This is the one...
Stop and go to...
So Elm Street.
Yes, that stop and go to CDOT.
I think... because you said Main Street. I think... So is that... does that mean that the design has been finalized? Because where do we stand?
No.
We have this whole street tree introduction plan that we're trying to...
So the design...
I'm nervous about signing off on it.
The design hasn't been finalized. This is just the construction requirements.
Right. And there has been some work in that regard. We just haven't had a chance to present it here yet, but we can next time.
Next time?
Yeah.
Isn't the design team here?
Not the design team. I was pointing at the guy with the hat.
Oh, right. You're supposed to come up with the street tree master plan.
He came up with some stuff and discussed it with Jeremy, and I've seen it, but they had to... well, just point him in here, I'm not an expert.
You want to see it?
Well, you will. But I think there were some questions they were trying to get answered with MDOT and then bring it to us for a global discussion on what they thought about. There were some issues that we had to deal with, including private property and other stuff.
Yeah, I mean, there's not... there's really no room for street trees to meet their standards.
But they already... I... we've talked with them, and they said it was...
So we went, and I mean, we'll bring back a plan or have this discussion. I'm still waiting for DOT to comment.
We have time to do that. We do. But I think we...
Some alternative plans for street trees.
You were having some... you're going to have some discussion with MDOT on some of the issues that Jeff and company brought up, and then we can cohesively bring it to the table for all...
Once we have answers from DOT.
Yeah.
I do have some others.
Okay.
All right. So...
Hope it is exciting.
So the Public Works Director, Planning and Development Director, and I met with the... he was the former Assistant Director of Planning. Now he's the Director of the Bridge Program, as well as the Region 2 Planner, which is our DOT region, to talk about the Rossin Avenue Bridge. Now, in the past, when they had what they called low-use and redundant bridges, there was really no process for how DOT would work through that with a community to determine what the, you know, steps forward would be with that particular bridge. And that's kind of why, when it came to the Rossin Avenue Bridge, we were just, you know, we had one meeting with them, and then that was pretty much it until, you know, this sort of newly... the new machinery of government in DOT that it is now came back and said, okay, well, this is the process going forward. So what they're going to do is they want to hold a public meeting at the end of October or early November to discuss what the community would like to see in terms of the Rossin Avenue Bridge. We said to them, it's very likely that you'll get a lot of strong feedback about the desire to keep pedestrian access open on that bridge. And so they said, well, you know, thinking ahead, if we get a lot of feedback that's pretty, you know, heavily in favor of that being a pedestrian bridge, and there's not a lot of interest in necessarily keeping it as a vehicular bridge as well, then we can work with the town on a cost-sharing agreement to put in a pedestrian bridge. So that's kind of hopefully be the process going forward. It would likely be a 50-50 cost-share agreement. It's DOT's bridge, so, you know, unfortunately, we're on their timeframes. However, I do believe if there's strong commitment from the town to move forward with a pedestrian bridge and contribute our share of the funding towards that project, it's something that we could hopefully, you know, prompt DOT to move forward with more quickly.
They did say they would not replace it with a bridge.
A truck, a car.
Right.
And I think that's important, so...
They would not replace it with a traffic type...
Correct. They will not.
Yeah, I do have a question. Last I heard, they were going to... they were so concerned about even pedestrian traffic, they were going to close it off, wire it off, so that people couldn't even do that. Is there any change of that? Is there any shoring up they can do so we can maintain pedestrian traffic for the time being?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
All right.
Which is, I mean, a really... I know you think you've heard it, but...
Well, only because, you know, we only have so much control over a bridge that we don't own, but we can...
But it was always clear from the beginning, when they said they weren't going to... they didn't consider it necessary enough for them to invest in it. It was always clear. That's when we got the presentation from Carmen, from Gartley and Dorsky, who gave two different possibilities. If the town wants to rebuild a bridge, then here are some options, and it was somewhere between $500,000 and $1 million, I think. So there was never any... I was unaware that DOT needed us to slow down. If we wanted to... the slow process is if we need to try to convince them or, you know, work through their thing, but we can build our own bridge.
We cannot. It's their road. We would have to have some agreement if we were going to build a bridge and...
But how much are they really going to push back on?
I mean, it's still... it's still a process.
Yeah, and I have to say that there's a financial element here in terms of sharing with us the cost of whatever we decide to do. That's a heck of a carrot.
I get that, but when the water is low behind Seabright Dam and property owners start complaining there, it's unbelievable how fast we can come up with $150,000 to solve a relatively minor problem by certain standards. This is for kids that are walking... like, this is a kind of a bombshell for kids that are walking from that part of Rossin Ave to the middle school. They now have to go all the way around Ames Terrace. That is a... that's... I mean, I walk there all the time, and it's quite nerve-wracking, because now we've actually increased the amount of traffic on Ames Terrace. It's... there's no shoulder. There's... it's... there aren't a lot of options, and it's, you know, not the wealthiest part of town, but it's... that's a big... they were... the people there were pretty accommodating in terms of, okay, well, yeah, we understand we're going to... that the DOT doesn't want to have the vehicular bridge, and they've been pretty flexible and not complaining too much. But they've been saying, I don't know, I just think there are always ways to figure things out. There are always options for temporary bridges. There are always... I do think we should at least go through the exercise of seeing what is possible and putting a price tag on it, because...
We can do that. We can do some homework in parallel. Nothing wrong with doing that.
And say, okay, if the town, we're going to pay for everything. What is... because maybe people do want to have a special town meeting and say, yeah, here's $200,000 for...
We can look at that. We can definitely look at that in parallel, but in the meantime, we should also push for the process, get MDOT through the October hearing, and by that time, we'll have some ideas on our own.
There are a lot of people that walk to town that are...
I get it. I agree with you. All right, we'll do that, but that's good information to have. I mean, the positive side of that is they're willing to do something with us possibly.
They do want to work with us.
Right. And because, you know, I'd like to see a really nice pedestrian bridge there. It'd be a little expensive, but we'll check.
If it takes five years, then that might not be worth saving $70,000.
We should expedite it in some fashion.
That's a good point. That's a good point. With MDOT, it can take years to get in the docket. That's absolutely a good point. So we'll play with some options, just to be better armed as we go forward, and we'll do it now. Cool.
Have more.
Oh, you keep going, Audra.
Sorry. So the Pleasant Ridge subdivision, we recently become aware of there is a stormwater retention pond within the subdivision, and there's some... the Homeowners Association has expressed an interest in selling that parcel, and...
Pleasant Ridge, can you orient us for a moment?
Up off of Washington, Goodwin.
Um...
Way out, Washington, this way. Washington is right here.
Straight up Mount Batty Street is Pleasant Ridge.
Straight up Mount Batty Street.
Yeah.
And if you make the right onto Goodwin, onto Goodwin, as you wrap around that big sharp bend is where there's a lot that is a common... it's a common lot in the subdivision plan that was approved, and there's a detention pond at the base of that hill down near Washington.
I just don't feel like that's Mount Batty Street, but...
And then we carry an insurance policy on it?
Yeah, we do.
Well, yeah.
Anyway, finish, Audra.
All right. So the Homeowners Association is interested in selling that lot for development on a portion of it, and...
Sorry. The detention pond?
Well, the lot that it's on...
The retention pond is in.
Sort of dividing it and selling a portion as a buildable lot, and then the detention pond would stay... it'd have to stay where it is. I think that both Jeremy Martin and myself have experience with these types of infrastructure becoming orphaned and causing the municipality a lot of problems. So I really do think that we should consider, you know, some sort of town involvement with the stormwater infrastructure, the detention pond. So that might be... I'd like to do a little bit more work on what that could be and what that could look like and come back to the board with a proposal.
Absolutely. We need some civil engineering first, don't you?
Well, we have had a civil engineer go take a look at it, as well as our Public Works Director and Assistant Director, and Jeremy took a look as well.
Okay.
So I think that, you know, we've got a little bit of information, but we need to, you know, write something up and give it to the board, and I'd like to do so at the next meeting.
All right.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure.
No, I think I've located it more just...
Oriented yourself.
Yes. More the... you want us to get involved in owning the detention pond?
Potentially. We'll look at...
Retention or detention?
Detention.
Detention pond.
Stormwater detention.
So...
Allison, right there at the top where the bend in the hill, the... on Goodwin Lane, you see Goodwin?
I don't see it.
Arrow goes straight up. Now go back to the right. Yep, right there.
Oh.
Now you see there are... there's a detention pond down to the right of where you're at, down near Washington Street. Right there. Yes. And so this is a part of... Pleasant Ridge was developed over many phases, and it is a DEP Site License subdivision.
Right.
So there's a site law permit here.
Right.
And so there's also local subdivision approval that's involved. So we're just looking at it again right now. I mean, you see how close it is to Washington Street, and therefore how close it is to the McGuntook. And that... I think that concerns me. Again, Audra and I have dealt with these orphaned ponds for years. And when we say orphaned ponds, and this is... often what happens is stormwater gets built as part of a project, stormwater ponds, and then everyone kind of forgets about them and lets them go.
Or at that other one that's...
Yes. So this is a broader question... subject that we should have a conversation about, about these types of ponds, but this specifically came up. Some interested parties reached out to me about it, and then I have met with a handful of people. When we were out there the other day, there were some neighbors that were interested in what we were doing there. They understood that the Homeowners Association's looking at trying to sell off not just... they're looking to sell off potentially the lot that includes the pond, and they would not separate the pond out, that I understand. It would just be one lot. And then you're looking at one property owner potentially having to maintain that pond for the whole subdivision. It is a unique situation. There, I think, are 12 lots that are part of a Homeowners Association up there. Most of those 12 lots drain no water to this pond.
Right.
And it's other people and other lots in the subdivision that do, and it just happened... it happened this way as the project got developed and permitted over time. So we're just looking at options and certainly not recommending it one way or the other at this point.
But you will have...
But we will have something for you on October 8th.
You believe by October 8th, you might have something substantial substance to look at, the pros and cons of option A, option B.
Yep.
Okay.
We know we have some serious water quality concerns with the river. It was interesting to see those numbers from the...
This pond, I mean, I will say, the pond, when we walked on it out there, the pond appears to be functioning as designed and as intended. It's a really neat little pond. Water quality looks great. There doesn't appear to be any issues with the pond, except maintenance.
Right.
But it's the... that's because that's all working and...
Correct. The last thing we want to have happen is a catastrophic failure.
Audra has one more.
Okay. Thank you.
I promise I'm done.
Sorry, Audra.
Generally teasing you.
So on October 1st, there's a meeting at Knox County on regional planning and economic development. The invitation was sent out to the entire Select Board, as well as myself, and I'm going to make sure Mr. Martin attends with me. I would urge all of you to come.
100 people at that meeting.
I would be happy to give you all more background information and more context on...
Thank you.
...regional planning and economic development in Knox County and the evolution of where we are now and where we might be going and why this is important to all of you, if you care to stop by and talk to me about it.
I intended to.
Why don't you tell us now, Audra? You've given this teaser to everyone.
I don't think you do.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea if anybody's interested to...
But I'd really like to encourage the whole board, anyone who can make it.
I'm going to go.
All right.
Is it open to the public? It has to be, right?
I think it has to.
Public meeting, yes. Yes, it is.
Anything else, Audra? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dodge.
Has CDAT been invited to attend that community economic development?
No, it's put on by Knox County, and they only reached out to elected officials and town administrators and managers.
So somebody from CDAT would not be eligible?
Oh, no, no, they could attend. Absolutely could attend.
So that's why I wanted to...
I'll reach out to CDAT.
They could show.
We don't even know what it is. I'm trying to get Audra to tell us what it's about first.
Me, too.
I could go on ad nauseam about this, and I won't.
Yes. Good point. So if that is your last point...
Last one. Done.
Mr. Ratner, if he has anything he'd like to add.
Do I have things to add? First off, unfortunately, I will not be here on October 1st. I have two...
First.
Date required, business trips to Los Angeles every year, and my next trip will be I'll leave on the 25th next week. So I will not be here for the next Select Board meeting as well, unfortunately. So I apologize for that. That will be my last business trip of the year during meeting time. I've been to a bunch of meetings in the last week. I did attend the ZBA meeting where he talked about the situation for restaurant opening at...
Noronbegga.
At Noronbegga. It was a very interesting meeting, lots of good discussion. I also attended the first Charter Commission... no, not the first Charter... the Charter Commission meeting where they got sort of the rules of the road and how they're going to progress, and it was... it's interesting going to those meetings, and all of the town meetings are open to everybody in town. If you're interested, you should attend as many meetings as you can, because it's always interesting. Sometimes, as I've joked with other people, sometimes it resembles paint drying, but most of the time, it's pretty interesting. The big meeting I was at this past weekend, last night, was the Energy Committee meeting, and there was a lot going on there. And a lot of interesting things. One of the things that came up is the possibility that the solar fund, the site that we were looking at off of 17, had come back up for sale again, and we're trying to track that down, if that's the case, if that sale broke through. Do you have an update on that, Anita? You were looking at that.
I asked if he could check to see...
I saw them.
I was trying to see if it's really the same one, and I sent him a copy of the listing as it had appeared, so they could match up the properties.
So, it may be a different site, but somebody at the conference said that maybe that sale fell through, so something maybe we should look at, if, if that is the case.
State will take our dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but you never know.
And solar charters.
Every time I drive by, I'm just like, sign's still up, yeah.
It was a very active meeting, one of the, a lot of good things about energy in the meeting, one of the key things I wanted to talk about was this weekend, this, this upcoming week, 20th through the 27th, is worldwide, sort of the climate, Fridays for Future Climate Strike by Students, they've been leaning towards this. Greta Thunberg, who started this whole process in Sweden, is in New York, and she will be leading a rally in New York, which should be hugely attended, but we will have some of our students out, I believe at the high school and watershed, doing some sort of demonstration as well. And one of the things we wondered about, the flyer that the energy committee put together about information, is a great flyer, which we're going to hopefully put online at some point, and wondering if anybody in the board feels any problem with it being distributed to the students.
I haven't seen it.
I, I printed it out, why don't we glance at it while we're going through, and.
I'm not gonna approve it tonight, until I can, have to review it.
I'll approve it tonight, Mark, no, just.
Give it to us.
It's, it's a great flyer, and it's something, now, the students, it's only something, no adults are allowed to speak or pass things out, so it has to, it has to come, student has to be able to do it, so, but I think it's, it's a great thing, and it's an important thing. One of the things to, to sort of go on to that, to something else, the, this weekend was CIF, which was incredibly successful, wonderful, wonderful, at a couple different things, and one of the things that I saw was a movie on Saturday night, the final movie on Saturday night, which was about an organization called Sea Shepherd, which was started by one of the people that first started Greenpeace, and it's, what they do is they do it without interfering, they do, they use a lot of film, a lot of proactive action, without causing any injuries or any, breaking any laws, to, to stop people, they were very involved in preventing whaling and a lot of other things.
That was a TV show.
What's that? Yeah, there was a TV show as well, and the man who started the, the film is about, the man who started the Sea Shepherd organization was at, at the film afterwards. Incredibly interesting thing, but the, one of the things he said at the end of the presentation is something that, take very seriously as we develop on our energy and our conservation, he said, you know, "We're not here trying to save the world, we're here to try and save us." And I thought that was a really good way of looking at everything we're doing based with conservation and stuff, you know, "The world will survive, and lots of things will survive, we are the ones that are in trouble." So, I thought it was very interesting. So, that's my report.
Mark, just a couple of things from my perspective, one was, because you stole my thunder again, about the harbor committee report, not harbor committee, the harbor report, there was recently, it's only been drafted, but you brought it up, you reminded me.
Harbor report?
Harbor report, about the, about the pollution in the river and the harbor.
Oh, yes, I did.
That's.
River that's polluting the harbor, in case anybody's.
Just so everybody knows, you know, this summer, we did a lot of activity, thanks to a lot of people, Dave Bolstridge, Amy, Abby Blakely, and Roger Ritmaster, and they did tons of testing of the harbor and the river and other locations, because we're trying to put a, a definition, a better definition or identification of where pollution may be occurring and may not be, the sources, we've had statewide reports done that says Camden Harbor has had problems, and it could be from four or five categories, but we didn't know which ones, and so we have, we're trying to, and this is not over, but that report is just in draft form, because we just got it this week from Abby, so we have to review, and then we'll get it out to, hopefully get it online so everybody can take a look, it's an interesting data, that's from the harbor itself and the river, which is part of the feed to this whole issue, because that's, we're all connected. Is it the river, is it the runoff, is the septic systems, is it, you know, blah, blah, it goes on and on, boat waste and all these pieces, so that will be out pretty soon, that's one. The other thing I wanted to mention was, because it is on consent agenda about replacing a window on this, on this building, which is, has been blown out for quite a while, by the way, it's a double pane window that's blown out, the seal is blown, but it does raise the issue of, and I know Dave and company are working on the building with, I believe Chris Fassold is working on it, with, looking at, this, this building needs repairs, if you walk around the building, you can see it, we can, this is another thing, we just can't, and not saying anybody is, but we're working on it, because there are a number of issues on this building that need to be addressed, so I'm glad that's happening, Audra, with your team, because I'd be interested in getting that report at some place, sometime soon, it'd be great. And that's it on the select board reports, with that said, we will move to approval of board minutes from September 3rd, 2019, I'm going to shoot this fly.
I know.
They're everywhere.
Any comments on the board minutes from September 3rd? Does anybody have any comments on it?
No, none for me.
All right.
Look into me.
Okay, we'll have a motion to accept.
I make a motion, we accept the board minutes from September 3rd, 2019.
Good.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Five zero, thank you very much. There are seven items on our consent agenda tonight, and they are, first, the approval of closure of Atlantic Avenue for Harbor Arts and Books from Fri, from Friday, October 4th, 4th, at 9:00 AM until Sunday, October 6th, at 7:00 PM. Secondly, a withdrawal of funds from the Opera House Maintenance Reserve for the replacement of the town office side window I just mentioned in the amount of $3,557.35. The approval of the updated resolution for electrical inspections, which has basically been redrafted, just to give the select board the opportunity to, like we do with all other permits, to set the permit fees like we do with all other permits, it wasn't, it was a little gap in the wording, and that's why it's being changed. Fourth was the approval of the Village Green application from the Chamber of Commerce for greeting cruise ship passengers on Sunday, September 29th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Five, consideration of the application for the taxicab business license and taxicab operator for Susan Kraft, doing business as Kraft Delivery Service. Next was the confirmation of the designation of the registrar of voters' office hours, which basically would be regular business hours, for the upcoming November 5th, 2019 special town meeting. And lastly, the confirmation of town clerk's appointment of Peter Gross as election warden for the special town meeting to be held on November 5th, 2019. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, they are hereby adopted. If you'd like to make a comment, I can see you.
I mean, no, no.
All right, all right. But to the fun one, we have the designation of 2019 Camden Roads Cleanup Days, I assume you have some dates for that?
Well, it's interesting, I feel like I've seen multiple copies of this agenda, they, did we?
We removed the copy that actually listed the dates.
Was there a controversy over that, is that why?
No, no, we just, no, I think we weren't certain that those were going to be the exact dates, so we thought that instead we would leave it open, so that if the dates had been.
That is good, because I was actually like, oh, I didn't realize I had told her definitely that day, and then I saw it printed, and then.
Do we have that in the dates?
I think I have to talk to Jenna, we had coordinated with Marcy, that seems to be the only day that makes sense, the 5th and 6th of.
I can't do the 5th, but the 6th, sure.
5th and 6th is, is it Saturday and Sunday?
It's a Friday and Saturday, because the great thing.
That's the 4th and 5th.
Yeah, it's the 4th and 5th, the 5th is a Saturday.
We're talking about like spring, right?
No, fall, we have to do it twice a year, because we want to get it before all the snow comes too. But, yeah, I guess the 4th and 5th, but it's not like everybody has to participate every day, where you're, you're the most helpful with all of your press releases and all of that stuff. And Audra, what was great is that this year, we didn't even have to bring it to the town, it just, it just came up with it.
Like, what's this on the agenda?
All on her own, and this was not.
No, Janice.
Oh, Janice is so great, she's just, yeah.
I think Janice deserves all the credit for that. The only thing I would say, and I, I don't think that there's a lot we can do about this, is that I found when we've done early October cleanups, that it's still so grassy, that it's challenging.
Yes.
And that I would personally choose like the third weekend of October to do it.
Rather than the 4th and the 5th?
Yeah, when there's a little bit more dieback, but I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's a great thing either way, and we'll get some trash off the roads.
You're suggesting 18, 19?
Yes.
I mean, that's.
I'll use my coin, your coin.
Shoot, that Marcy, usually the way we.
That's a weekend.
Do it is because of, of Rockport, and then Marcy deserves, speaking of people who deserve credit.
Yeah, and either way, we'll get some trash off the roads, that would just be my only suggestion about.
Yeah, I've thought about that too.
Yeah.
You want to arm wrestle over it?
She'll win.
We're not fighting.
No, we're on this. You would, you would know if we were fighting.
The town office this year is going to participate, so.
I mean, you guys.
I agree with Jenna, we do have to double check with Marcy to make sure, because we, we share supplies across multiple towns, so.
And it's neat, it's sort of this cascade of weekends with different towns doing it.
We won't be getting until the 8th, so if, we're not going to be able to specify tonight, you're going to have to publicize it some other way.
Either like Allison.
We'll find out by the end of the night.
All right, okay, all right, cool.
We'll table it until.
All right, you've got it, no problem. Sixth on the agenda is the discussion of action on the renewal of vitla license for Hoxbill Courafoto at Five Bayview Landing. Gibb, what, you want to speak to it?
Sure. If you want me there, yeah.
Sure, please, yeah, you can do it either place, actually.
Jeremy or Mike?
So, as you recall, last meeting, we were here and we did the liquor license for Hoxbill, and the vitlas license is, is a little past due. We do have a couple of issues there, fire, the fire department does, that need to be addressed, and I believe Matt Haskell, or at least some of his staff are aware, I know Matt's here. So, I would recommend, I spoke with the code officer, as well as the fire chief, I know Matt's working on some of the things, the electrical issues, he let me know he's working on some of those, that's good. There is a separation issue with the, one of the chimneys that needs to be resolved, and then there was, fire department got called there this weekend over some, I guess it was some wood that was left in the oven, fire department went there, there was again, some, something blocking one of the means of egress, which we've talked to the owner about before, so that was again, that happened, and there was someone staying there in a, in a portion of the rooms, one of the rooms, so we just need to resolve this, we need to make sure it's safe, and we're committed to working with Matt, I think Matt's working with us, I think, and so what I'd recommend is that we do a conditional licenses, as you remember, last year, we did a conditional license over the smoke issue. What I'd recommend, that we do a license condition for 30 days, would be my recommendation, and I know, I believe the chimney stack issue's being worked on, and, you know, if, if we get to a point 30 days from now, or a month from now, where they're still not finished with it, I think we can just continue it again for another 30 days, but I, I mean, I think it's important that we, you know, stand firm and make sure the stuff gets done, and, and I'd hate to put it out for another 90 days like we did with the smoke issue last year.
Well, it seems like on the, on the documents from the fire chief and code officer, the issues on the plugs is, that's easily fixed.
Yeah.
The connection.
Which, again, I think he's got someone, electrician working on.
The, the clear zone for exiting kind of thing.
Yeah.
That, that's kind of, it seemed like the only time element might be this flu encapsulation.
I think that's probably accurate. Do you think that's right, Matt? I'm just asking, I mean, Matt's here, so maybe he can.
Well, no.
There's not even a problem with that, before we talked about.
Please, please do, Matt, please.
So, we have taken care of that chimney?
There isn't even a problem with the chimney, it's, it's just a problem with the makeup air, so we just turn the makeup air, and it brings more fresh air into the building, so that that night, when we close all the windows, and when we close the door of the building, that there's not some sort of off negative pressure that sucks smoke out of the front of the oven, it's fixed, the makeup air's been turned up.
That's the fire, that's the fire advantage that occurred last week, I understand, that's easily fixed.
Right.
I was speaking to the enclosure of the flu ductwork going through the dining area that has to be basically encapsulated, fire-safed, is my understanding.
Nobody's told me anything about that at all. I was supposed to get an email from the fire chief, and I didn't get an email from the fire chief either, so, to my knowledge, everything that the fire chief asked me to fix was fixed, except for there's a couple of extension cords, and Scott Arsenal's going to come in and fix those out.
Let me ask you this question, what is the manufacturer of that ducting recommended for that flu going through an occupied space?
Well, we had it done by Smith &amp; May, and he came in, and he said that this is commercial stovepipe, and it's insulated as it's supposed to be.
Right, so it doesn't burn anybody.
Yeah, nobody's told me otherwise, I haven't gotten any sort of an email from the, from the fire chief.
Well, that seems to be the conundrum then, because the, the flu going through occupied space typically, well, I'm not the expert here, but will be encapsulated with something to protect people.
Because it has, it has insulation around it.
That's for heat, that's for heat, but you have to, in any kind of duct, or any penetrates a floor, it has to be fire-safed, and, and if, and if the, if you can provide, I mean, if.
If it is fire-safed.
If you can, if you can provide, Jeremy asked this, if you can provide a certification from the installer that this meets code, because I don't think it does, but I, that's my, if it, if we can get a certification from the, from the installer, the supplier, whatever, you know, whoever it was.
Installer, yeah.
Installer, and then that's, that's, that could work.
Okay, fine, but I wasn't aware of this until just now.
Yeah.
Nobody sent me any emails.
Okay, okay, got it, got it, well, but that's, that is the issue, and that, that can take, if, if it were an issue, obviously, Matt, it would take a little time to do that.
Sure.
I understand, so, yeah, I think I would agree with the 30 days, but I suggest to the board that we have another hearing on this, a discussion on this, 30 days from now, at whatever select board meeting that is, right, to revisit.
Can I ask a question about this? It, it says conditional improvement from Steve Wilson and from Chief Farley, which is fine, but it sounds like you're not even aware of what the, the actual problem is, and that's.
The only thing I was aware of was some blocked egresses, and we just did another inspection last week, and all the egresses were clear, the one egress that Jeremy might think was still blocked is when they came in that night, we have a little, we have possibly a little push cart that was maybe, that has our bus bucket on it, that maybe got in the way or something like that, but during service, all the egresses are clear.
We have concerns, I mean, there was someone staying in the building at night, and the fire department showed up for, I understand, but however, when things hit the fan, and unfortunately they do sometimes, and someone needs to use a means of egress and escape, they need to be able to get out of that door, it needs to be a clear path.
Right.
It can't be a cart sitting there, because when things are hectic and things are in a situation.
Again, too many areas, one of the servers pushed it at the end of the night.
Okay, my, my question is, is there, there's still, there seems to be some confusion about what the problem is, whatnot, I would suggest we check it at the next select board meeting and not wait 30 days, and do, do the conditional improvement, but I'd like to hear that these issues are fixed, because what it comes down to is, you know, if it comes down to safety for the people, you know, a conditional report, well, there's still things not fixed, according to what I'm reading, that's a concern, and I, I feel very troubled about okaying something that's not safe yet. And so, you know, and the other thing I noticed on this thing, on the license, it says, originally, the original writing said seating capacity 200 plus, and then, written in there, it says licenses 85 inside, 40 outside, which is 125 total. Has that been straightened out, the seating arrangements? Because there's two different figures here.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that, honestly.
I don't know who wrote that handpiece. The fundamental issue, you're right, Mark, is, is we have a report from the fire chief that we have in front of us, and that clearly suggests that this element of a seal on, on approved openings with approved material, that it failed in the fire chief's report, and basically saying it's per manufacturer's recommendations, that's why I brought him to manufacturer.
Fair enough, but I haven't, I don't have a copy of this report.
I got it, I got it.
I left Jeremy two people phone messages, he never called me back.
All right, we're going to, let's get, there's the chase, to the chase, we'll get.
I've been doing this a long time, too, and I need communication, so.
Yeah, well, let's get this information to him, but, but I, but that manufacturer's report back has to happen, and you picked up what time period it has to be, 30 days, 30 days, fine, we, I don't know if it should be next select board meeting or not, that's, that's three weeks away, that's almost 30 days.
I'd, I'd suggest, I mean, personally, coming from a life safety background and code background, I'd go with the October 8th meeting.
Okay, all right, so.
And then, and then if we.
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I just say that if we're going to do this conditional license, and we're talking about the October 8th meeting, and Matty doesn't even understand or hasn't, has, is expressing that he hasn't had appropriate communication, whether we have different stories about that or not, it doesn't, it, we want to make sure that he knows what he's doing, before we're asking him to come back with just as little information. So, what can we do right now, tonight, to ensure that the marching orders, so does we?
Just like, just like the last, just like the last meeting, when this issue kind of came up, and Matt and I discussed, the very next morning, we were in communication about what needs to happen, and Steve and Fire.
So that can happen again, something expeditions like that, okay.
It can happen again, and it will happen again. I mean, we've been down there a handful of times since the meeting.
There was nobody in communication with me the next morning, I dispute that absolutely, I was the one who called next morning, and left him multiple messages that were never returned, and we've also gone to the fire, to the fire station, my general manager hasn't asked to speak with the police chief, so you know what?
Yeah, well, you know, I don't, I don't want to deal with.
Maybe it needs to be in writing.
Yeah, I don't want to deal with, he said, she said.
Put it in writing.
First thing tomorrow morning, we'll get him a copy of what we have here, two.
I'm surprised she doesn't have it already, and he'll have it no more.
I had a plumbing inspector call me.
Right, and two, and this manufacturer, installer is local, so we should be able to get it very rapidly, get a letter from them.
Installer's local, and we spoke with him, so.
And they should be able to give us a statement of whether this is acceptable or not, and if it is, why, and if he believes it's acceptable, they need to meet with the fire chief.
What did Smith &amp; May say? They say they believe it's.
Smith &amp; May, Smith &amp;.
Is that who it is?
I doubt it very seriously, but.
They say they believe it's acceptable?
No.
No, I would doubt it, but anyway, but let's give them a chance to, to see it, respond to it, and, you know, I think we should, you know, we can pick whatever date you want, temporary, what do you call it, license, with a date on it, but I think without, we've got to resolve one issue quickly, and that is what is recommended by the manufacturer and installer in terms of this.
Any electrical stuff.
Well, the electrical stuff.
Which is, I think is working on.
That I'm sure is, you can handle, it's, it's kind of small, or, in a concept.
Super small.
Yeah, exactly, so I'm not as concerned about that piece, we can inspect that, but this one's bigger, and if it does need to be done, there's also, it doesn't get done overnight.
No, it doesn't.
So, you know, if, if it needs to be done, so let's get that, but I think what we should do is just give it, we should put a date on it, get a temporary.
Why don't we do three weeks, then?
I mean, let's, I'd like to just take Jeremy's recommendation, and this is the kind of thing I.
Three weeks.
Definitely defer to Jeremy.
October 8th, I mean, that doesn't.
All right.
One thing, I'd, I'd love to know what the difference in the seating capacity is on the license, two different things there.
Probably just I feel a little wrong, then we have no idea.
Well, somebody commented on that, I don't know who did it.
If I'm not going to be here on October 8th, what, can I get this approved if I'm not going to be in the state of Maine, so that I don't have to attend the next meeting?
I, I would suggest if.
Because I'm not supposed to be.
If everything is fixed, and we do an inspection prior to that meeting, then it can be on the consent agenda.
Exactly.
Yeah, you don't need to be here.
Yep. Yes, sir. Okay, good, so, so do I have a motion for this license through October?
I'll make a motion that we do the conditional license for 30 days, but that we need to[1769.98] I'll make a motion that we do the conditional license for 30 days, but that we need to report at the next select board meeting on October 8th about the progress of the repairs.
Second.
We were just.
Hold on.
I think we were just going to make a recommendation that it be valid for, conditional for 21 days to get it out to October 8th.
Okay, so corrected, so, motion is corrected to, conditional to October 8th.
Second.
Discussion, who's in favor?
I just, can I quickly with this, I just, I know that it sounds like there's a lot of frustration here and a lot of communicate, I just want to make sure that, reiterate that I, I hate to see a business frustrated in Camden, we've had troubles over the years attracting businesses, particularly year-round businesses, you know, different kinds of businesses, and I just, I want to make sure that we're all working together as best we can and that we don't get to this level of frustration and I don't put that.
Do an excellent job working with businesses.
Putting anything on your staff, I'm just encouraging continued positive work together.
Thank you, all right, any more discussion on this motion, all's in favor? 5-0, thank you very much, Jeremy, thank you, Matt.
We'll reach out to Matt first thing in the morning.
Okay, cool, if it's okay with the board, I'm going to move the presentation of the work plan by downtown design group up next.
Oh, I knew it.
Surprise you.
I thought you have to do the next.
There's, there's such good company though, you know, like having them here.
I know if they leave, there's nobody here. I'm sorry? Yes, 5-0, I'm sorry, Beth. That's okay, 5, 5-0, unanimous.
Kind of set.
Yeah, just warming up my computer.
Take a breath.
Hi.
Hi, Deb.
I'm Deb Dodge, representing the design team and with me tonight are Rafi Baeza and Meg Barkley, two of our team members. Tonight, we're here to give you a bit of an update on our two projects and our work plan that we're concentrating on, the Mechanic Street Lot mural and the Harbor Walkway. But first, on behalf of all of us on the design team, we want to give a big thanks to Rick Seibel for all of the work he has done with us, with this design team, he's been with us from the very, very start before the design team actually became an official town committee. He's been invaluable, he's supported us, suggested ideas, improved the ideas we've had, and he steered us in good directions. And he really has been a wonderful asset for our team.
Oh, there it is.
We will, we will miss him, and there's Rick, right there, swimming, swimming away. We will miss him, but we're looking forward to working with David St. Lorne and I think we'll continue our good relationship that we've got with the Public Works Department, so we just wanted to, on behalf of the team, express that.
Thank you.
And we do have visuals for you tonight, as we show them to you, we'll talk about why we're doing this project, what the project is looking like to date, these are concepts and how we're going to go about doing the projects and what we anticipate our next steps to be, and we're looking forward to your feedback and your support. Meg Barkley and Rafi are going to kick us off with the mural and then Meg and I will talk about the Harbor Walkway. I'll start with just a word about the why, maybe there doesn't need to be too much explained about the why on the mural, we all know that the, the wall on the Mechanic Street Lot is an eyesore as it is. And the town is about to embark on rehabilitating that parking lot, including rebuilding the retaining wall and making it an attractive retaining wall, we've got stairs coming down. And it would be a real shame if we didn't then take care of that wall with something visually attractive once the town has invested all that money in redoing that Mechanic Street Lot. So that's our why, and now it'll be sort of the Meg and Rafi show for a couple of minutes.
Sure. Don't all jump up at once.
So one of the problems with this wall is that that concrete that you're looking at there, hmm, maybe I don't need to be plugged in.
Okay.
You'll be okay, is, it's very strange, if you really study it, what happened was there used to be another building inches away from that and concrete was poured down the crack between the buildings, and so the ghost of the building that's taken away is in that concrete, there are these striations every 16 inches, which were probably some form of siding. And then like way down at the corner, there's what looks like wood shingles upside down, but that's because it's the ghost in reverse of wood shingles. It's very weird, so it's a rough textured wall, and so whatever goes on, it's going to have to be simple enough to deal with the rough texture, so this is just an idea of what could happen there.
It says Camden.
That's very different from the other one.
It says Camden in nautical flags.
Yes, I can read that.
Yeah, so the idea is striking a line at approximately the level of the retaining wall, doing a background color of some kind of seal that concrete and then putting a graphic up, that would be very simple to paint because it's straight lines, geometric, a volunteer could do it. You could snap chalk lines and do it, and don't take those colors too literally, my, my program only has so many colors to work with.
Is this a paint-on, is that what I hear you say?
It's a paint-on thing, so.
Let me know what questions are.
So, so anyway, this is the general concept, and you can ask some questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So how far along is, the, part of me likes the other one, and I hadn't really seen much in detail or sort of had something flashed in front of me, but the whole idea of like looking to the future and the past and the kind of wildness of it.
The creativity.
I liked that, I'm a little sad.
Where is the?
Did too, I liked that a lot, I also really liked the other parking lot design that went with that.
I know, we can't agree on everything.
With trees, you know, and green space.
Or the, the living wall or the, you know, the, could it be a little more like rough textured like the, like the ocean, like.
I think this will be rough because we're not, you know, smoothing out the wall. We all loved the art that was created that we first looked at. And I don't know if you all remember when we were talking about the redesign of the Mechanic Street parking lot. It was a complicated execution process and very expensive.
Yes.
Because that wall is so difficult, because it is not even as smooth as a nice brick wall, we were having to assemble panels, have panel, have a framing for a panel system, have the artwork painted on the panels then installed, and that price tag was huge, it was complicated and very expensive. We loved the artwork, we loved what the artist had conceived and we loved the vision of it. Rafi certainly loved the vision of it, he sort of curated that vision. The wall does not support that kind, plus, we were looking at a $20,000 project. And does that wall support that kind of a project? So that's why we've gone to something cleaner, simpler, bold, yes, bright. It's something on that wall, but the wall really created a situation where we couldn't do something as sophisticated as that beautiful artwork.
And I definitely think, I mean, I appreciate that it's complicated and I like, I don't, I like doing something on the wall, it's more just like, oh, I didn't realize we were, maybe the grieving, maybe the grieving process, or could it be a forest? Are there, are there types of drawings, paintings that could be
Could be infinite.
Rough, but, you know, I'm imagining somebody getting up there and it's like an evolving. Yeah, expressionist.
Deb, where does this stand in terms of?
A little bit more organic looking, I guess.
This wall is owned by a private building owner?
Yes, by Mr. Turner who owns that building.
And what discussions, just so we know, have you had with him regarding this art? In terms of, does he have any?
He has said whatever.
Okay, that's a question, yeah, good, good answer.
Do it, go for it.
Okay, good.
Whatever.
Just want to clear.
He's very open.
All right, cool.
I think that answers. Yeah, yeah, he's, he's definitely is like, you know, as long as he's not footing the bill, it's a wall, okay, so.
Okay, okay.
I can, I can add to it, I was, I was at all those meetings and there was a lot of frustration that it was so complicated and so difficult and the wall is in such bad shape, and that the nice thing about this is it's easy to do, it's inexpensive, and it's also easy to repair. And that's, that's a really important part of the project because of the condition of the wall. Because if, the more intricate, the more advanced it gets, the harder it is to repair, and that's something that, you know, we need to look at.
Annie, did you have a comment? Yeah, of course you may, it tells you are first.
I'm delighted to see you were taking action on putting a mural up on that wall, which of course, I'm sure most of us have looked at and thought, oh, it needs a mural. Certainly I've thought that for the last 25 years, so I imagine there are more of you in, in addition to me who have seen really, really remarkable large murals on walls in cities and towns, even really small towns. Walls that just grab you and are just striking. And I, I, one question I have is whether, is there some reason why you couldn't put expanded metal lath and stucco over that to smooth the surface, to create a, a surface to work on?
I have talked to somebody in the masonry business and he didn't recommend doing it. He did not believe that it would last on that wall and the expense would be enormous.
Of expanded metal lath?
Yeah, and of stuccoing that wall in order to create a mural on it. Remember, we're having to do this through private fundraising and money is sort of an object. And when I talked to Smith &amp; May, the recommendation was no.
Another.
And I actually, I actually talked to an out-of-state company, I mean, an out-of-town company that does that and he made the same recommendation because they'd seen the wall and said the wall was not, I want to say this nicely, but the wall is not worth that upgrade.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, is there a future envisioned to remove, change, cover over the wall or is, are you seeing this wall remaining as is in the future? And the second question is, is this existing surface that you're working with a surface that crumbles readily? Or is it, is it sort of pretty solid as it is now, even though it's bumpy?
Okay, so, the town does not control the wall. The wall is owned by a, by a.
Wait, let me just.
By, by a private person, therefore, what is done with the wall is in some degree in the private person's hands, right? So, large fixes to the wall, sort of building another wall in front of the wall that would be owned by the town is kind of not in the offing. The surface does not crumble, it's extremely porous and you'll see there's bits of debris in it, like, there's like little chunks of wood that somehow made their way down as the crack. But it is fragile in that if you look at the base of the wall where there's been impacts from people's bumpers, there's chunks crack and it's quite possible that chunks will spall off in the future, you know, like a big diamond shaped chunk might plop off which could then be filled in with some cement mix and painted back over, and so what we were looking at is to do something and not, it doesn't have to be that, but something simple with clean lines and bold in that, and, and very defined color palette that we would keep a list of so that if chunks of the wall came loose and fell off and it had to be repaired, the entire mural wouldn't be ruined forever. So that's just sort of part of the concept of what we're trying to achieve, because if we do something really nice, we're essentially creating signage on the wall or you'd have to build a wall in front of the wall.
Deb, we're here tonight to discuss the work plan of the design team, the work plan is still to continue working on this mural, we're not being asked to approve it tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
We want to design, we want to move forward, I'm sorry, we do want to move forward because we want to be able to, and Rafi will talk a little bit about an outline of how we would go forward, once a design was, you know, sort of finalized, we want to be able to move forward because we'd like to have something that we could work on in the spring and get up, we'd like, you know.
Sure, sure.
So, no, we're not asking for your approval tonight, it is a project we're working on.
Right.
And because it is a privately owned wall, there is a less of a role for official town action on it.
Understood, Mark, you have a comment?
I would also like, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, it is a private wall, it's being built with private funds, it's not something the select board needs or has the authority to
Correct.
approve or not approve.
Correct.
It's been, I think it's been brought here as a courtesy.
Yes.
But it's not something that, that we have an official say on, and I also will say that art is so subjective. If we were to go on and look at, we could look at 100 different designs and we could go on forever, I think the committee has done, when this design came up, it was, it was a unanimous decision from the committee that this is the best solution that we can come up with without waiting a year, two years, three years and going through the discussions about art, which will take forever.
Well, the reason I mentioned that issue was only because design team meetings are open to the public. And if anybody has any, we're introducing the topic as part of the work plan, encourage people to come in and provide comments, very valuable comments as we go forward with the work plan and execution, otherwise.
I'd also like to speak about the green wall, which was brought up.
Green wall?
Green, well, green wall, so, green walls are a thing.
Oh, oh, sorry.
That it's a frame you put on the wall, you put plants in it, grows, looks great. But there are two things, one, you can plant vines on a wall, vines are very detrimental to the health of your bean because their little roots just pull the building apart. So green walls are these panels, but you have to irrigate them, these things are not planted in the ground, so we would be creating an irrigation trickle system. So it becomes like too much, I mean, it's great in your atrium of your swishy office.
They're fun to look at.
All right, maybe we should move forward and talk about the plan, okay, you're allowed, go ahead.
I mean, because I do think we should try to put, not put this to rest, but, but with the select board role, I see that the select board role is because of, we would be the agent for, the fiscal agent, right? So, I do think that when the town serves that purpose, that it should be, you know, people are making tax deductible donations to the town, that we are the guardians of town funds in a way, and so we should sign off on it and be enthusiastic about it, not that anybody needs our approval to paint their wall, but it's, it's the fiscal agent part of it. So, I do think we should say, what I like about this, even if I am thinking, oh, well, maybe the design could be like this or like this, it looks like you're not investing so, 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 so much that it's the kind of thing that, well, this is going to be here for the next 100 years and everybody has to agree. It feels like you guys, I would say you guys should move forward with whatever seems the best, I mean, the, if, if the town, if you came up with something and you painted it all and the town would hate it or something, then we'd paint something else on top of it, so I, I think, I mean, I'd be very comfortable saying, yeah, go for it, and whatever you can get on that wall, rather than letting the perfect be the enemy of the good and all of us. I think you should try to do what we should, say, yes, let's go for it, let's fundraise through the town, try to keep it within reason and you guys figure out what seems best, that's what I.
The other question I had is, is that, I know you said you didn't have a lot of choice in colors, but.
Well, not on my program.
Right, but, yeah, I understand, but, but basically, they are primary colors because those flags are, and it strikes me as extremely bold and sort of somewhat out of character for the town, and I'm concerned about the.
And like you can go to a design committee meeting and maybe like hash that out.
But I, I don't, I still don't think we want to get into a debate about what colors and blah blah here, because I agree with Mark, we all have, almost all of us have different colored shirts on tonight for a reason, you know, almost all of us, Mark, we're kind of close. But anyway, I, I think, but I hear, what I hear the select board saying, what I hear the select board saying, proceed with this part of your work plan.
And thank you, thanks.
And I also want to say to all the artists out there in TV land, if you have some idea and want to come to the design team meeting.
You go, perfect, thank you, Meg, that's perfect.
And we would, right, yes, well. Because he has been involved in execution of murals, so.
Beth, have you got all these names for your record, okay.
Yeah, just, so, yeah, I agree, this maybe tells less of a story, but I think there's other opportunities for this as far as like community involvement in painting the walls, so.
Right.
I think that's great. And Steve Karen, from Karen Painting, has offered to paint the initial base of the, paint the concrete, so we have, yeah, so we would pay for the cost of the paint, and we can have some kind of sealant paint, actually, there's one here that we were using before, it's a Wexon primer, it's a concrete masonry primer that would help to seal it. And if we could get the, I, I haven't talked to Steve, but lately, but if we could have the concrete painted in the fall, it could signal to the town that we're planning to do something.
Good idea.
That's a great idea.
Great idea.
Yeah. And, you know, I've reached out to the school, too. I feel like in the spring, we would have an opportunity to engage with students, to have them be involved in this project, and especially since it's, you know, since it's just large blocks of color, they could paint that. So that would give us time over the winter to raise the money, and then involve the community in the spring.
Right.
And, you know, maybe there's some adjustments or whatever to, to the piece.
Sure.
Will you do a press release to the public as well, requesting, you know, if anybody wants to-
Yeah, well, you know, at the, in Rockland, that's what we did. We had open, like, like maybe three days of preparation, and then three days of community involvement, and, and we would definitely open that up for the public.
Thank you. Thank you. Second part of your work plan.
Thanks, Greg.
Yep.
All right, you're joining. Bring out the other thing here.
Oh, that's cool. Guys are prepared.
More visual aids. Woo, oh, went away by itself.
So, we're talking about the Harbor Walkway, and the why probably is also pretty easy to explain. It, the Harbor Walkway, the need for it is grounded in our downtown master plan. The walkability audit that we had in 2012 talks about it as the alley, and the final public landing report from 2013, you know, this is an access. The harbor and public landing are, you know, two of our biggest destinations for both residents and visitors to town. And to try and reduce the conflict-
Here we go, the conflict.
To try and reduce the conflict on Commercial Street.
Oops, sorry, wrong thing.
The other button.
Which is, on Commercial Street, which is pretty narrow. We have people, pedestrians that are trying to use it, we have merchants that are using Commercial Street.
Okay, so that's-
So, here's the-
Harbor Walkway.
Harbor Walkway today.
Whoops, there's Commercial Street.
There's Commercial Street.
I was like, wait.
And trucks, cars, pedestrians, and merchants, all using Commercial Street. So, the more people we can bring to our public landing through the Harbor Walkway with an improved and safer and more appealing access to the harbor, the better off we are. The impetus now to get moving on this in our work plan is because we want to dovetail with the DOT. Obviously, they're doing the drainage project straight down the Harbor Walkway. And so, what we are hoping to do is to dovetail with them, because anything above what they are going to do, they are excavating, they are putting in drainage, and they are just going to resurface as is. Any improvements or enhancements, we need to pay for, the town needs to pay for. So, what we hope to do is to get estimates, and I'll talk about this after we, after Meg talks a little bit more about the concept of the design. We want to be able to dovetail with their work, so whatever the town does, we're not redoing after the DOT has done something. We can take advantage of the fact that they are already there doing the construction, and it should cost us less. So, the why is what is happening now here and on Commercial Street, and trying to improve that pedestrian access down to the landing and down, and down to the harbor, and make it safer. And we do have a walk, a workaround and a walk-around proposed for the trucks that still need to be able to back up partway because they need to service the businesses. So, we are not eliminating that, and we're not proposing to eliminate that, but we want to work and create the kind of a walkway that they will also be able to respect.
Got it.
So, with that.
Okay, so, a couple things I want you to notice in this image here, is that you can see where the planters are. The planters in the photo on the right are essentially in line with the front of that building that is to the right of the truck in the left-hand photo. And the, the door there is where the trucks need to back up to, that's the loading bay.
That's where Jack's art studio was.
Yes, exactly.
And his Realtor's office.
Realtor's office now, but that's where the trucks need to make it to that door that's in the base of the Seadog. But the trucks don't need to go any further than that. In fact, a truck would be pretty tight going in the alley. There's only 14 feet between the Seadog and that brick building up there. So, going back to our first, so this is a perspective looking, the back with the truck removed, and the idea is, oh, if you look back at the photo, you'll also note that the hedge that's there now in that green space comes right to the curb. So, if you're a pedestrian, you're forced to like, walk up, if, you know, and go kind of onto the grass around the truck and back onto the walk. It's not a very friendly situation. So, oops, so, no, we're going to go the other way. So, the idea is to, where those planters are now, at between the brick building and the Seadog, up to the public sidewalk, when the main DOT tears everything up, rather than putting asphalt back from the face of the brick building up to the sidewalk to replace, exactly, to replace that section of the walkway with concrete, so that it is, reads sidewalk to everybody, to pedestrians.
It's an extension of the sidewalk.
It's an extension of the sidewalk. You know, you look and you see sidewalk, ah, this must be a place where I, a pedestrian, am supposed to go. And the planters, during the summer months anyway, will be a little cheerful note, and will also keep people from trying to move vehicles through.
In theory.
Is that concrete, just sloped?
Yes, so it's the concrete sloped, and what our suggestion is, is to have the concrete scored, because the slope of Harbor Walkway is twice as steep as a handicapped ramp. So, having scored concrete will create a, you know, rougher texture, more non-skid texture, even than asphalt would be. So, and then, from that building down, it would be reasphalated, but there is a brick walkway that goes horizontally there, behind that second light pole, up, 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 up there. There's a brick walkway that goes horizontally over to a deck that's over there. And that brick walkway, the idea is to connect with that brick walkway with another brick walkway that would come down like a sidewalk beside, beside here, this-
I'm begging you, yes. What do you think?
Here we go, the, ooh, I don't even know how to use it.
It's a button there.
There we go. So, right here, this is, cut back the hedge, which right now comes out to the curb, slice the hedge back, and create a walkway down and around that's a sidewalk that you walk around the trucks. So, that, that's the concept. And then to add three streetlights, because the alley's very dark at night, that would be similar in design, perhaps more diminutive if they exist, but to echo our streetlights up on Main Street to also signal that this is a public way. And then, what we're suggesting here is, you know, little, you know, arms that you could put a little flag that would say Harbor Walkway, or not. I mean, the reason why to have something is because our new LED streetlights don't have the globes, and as a result, they almost disappear in the daytime. So, to have a little something in the daytime that was signaling you to go down.
Could be hanging plants.
Could be hanging plants. The problem with hanging plants is, one of the lights is up where the planters are, and the hanging baskets need to be watered from a truck, and the truck couldn't get there. So, you may remember that there was the master plan, and right now, what that green area is now, these are those brick buildings, this is the Seadog, this is the chamber, this whole area that's green space with grass and bushes is to become parking. And the green space instead moves over here to beside the harbor, which would be very nice.
That's all ledge, though.
It is.
That's not what we're proposing.
But this is, this is in every iteration, would have to be engineered, of the master plan. So, what we didn't want to do was create a plan that would, in some way, not work if this ever happened, okay? So, we don't want to, you know, create something and then have it destroyed. Oh, here's a view from the top where you sort of see, you know, down the alleyway, you'd see planters, you'd see lights and stuff, and it would be a signal to go down. Then, so this is the idea here, so this is the section that would become sidewalk with the two planters to keep trucks and whatnot from going, because tourists have also tried to drive up there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, right there is where the delivery bay is.
So, trucks go right up to essentially here, is where they pull up. This is the existing brick sidewalk to this deck. So, the idea is you could come down here, get onto this sidewalk, walk down the path around the truck, and back on out.
Is the asphalt, it looks like it was tiered.
Oh, that's because I, I, I took measurements along the way, and so you'll see, those are because I've created planes in my model. I mean, it's more wavy than that.
Okay.
No, this is a concept.
Understood.
Hold on, so, you see a way to, to create tiers or waves?
No, 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 no. That's just, it's, it's just my modeling I have to create. I'll, I'll show you, you'll see. So, then this is the same plan with what the proposed public landing design is. That's, that's what TY Lynn designed essentially here. This brick is our brick walkway is where you will see, I'll go back to that plan, they have striped areas to get out of handicap spaces here and here. So, the brick walkway would essentially act as the get-out-of-your-car-in-the-handicap-space way. They've, they're having people come in here and in this way.
Yep.
They essentially took this whole area that we have as asphalt right up in this green area and made that all sidewalk material.
Yep.
We didn't. I, I kind of like brass.
That's like a Rockport Library level of blasting that would be necessary there.
Well, if, if, if they do the parking thing, but see, this is, see what they did, where those stripes are for people getting out of handicap cars, that's where our brick walkway is, okay?
Through the grass.
Through the grass.
Got it, got it.
Okay?
That's ours, that's the grass.
So, right, there's ours that shows the grass in the walkway, so that's where-
It's more like, it's like, I, I know you think you've already, you understand it really fast, and, but, I mean-
Hang on, we're not done yet.
All right, I'll wait in line.
Okay, so that's with the, with the TY Lynn design, and then this is the section through. So, this is the slope.
Oh.
And so, I took measurements all along the way, and it is not an even slope. It, it kind of is steeper and flatter and steeper and flatter, and it kind of wavy-gravies its way on down. And then, this is a pretty darn good approximation of the slope that is there. I mean, parking on this, I don't know what TY Lynn was thinking, but it's their design, I'm not a landscape architect.
Right.
That's all I can say. But we're suggesting something for now, which is a way to make a better pedestrian experience. And so, the whole point of this concept to throw out to you guys is not to, is it this brick or that concrete? It's to say, do you think that in general, it would be a good idea to do this? Because the main DOT is doing their drainage project starting next October, and they have drainage, as far as I know, that's going down under Harbor Walkway. They're going to dig the whole thing up.
Yeah.
Their plan is just to put it back with asphalt. But if we want to do something different, this is our opportunity to run electrical conduit underneath, if we want to add lighting. If we want to change paving materials for a section of it, this is an opportunity to do that, and the main DOT very well may kick in what their asphalt per square foot would be for that area that we could put towards something else. So, that's why we're bringing this to you now, to go through the process of-
The idea.
The idea. And when you said you really liked that mural that Allen did, we were thinking it could look really good on this big blank brick wall here, right by the waterfall.
Right by the waterfall.
Right by the waterfall.
The concrete obstruction in the middle of the river, you mean?
Don't get snippy.
Yeah, yeah, we have so many places around town that could have murals.
Yep.
Just our new, the Knox Mill parking lots have, actually, somebody has started doing a little bit of graffiti there. I was kind of like, oh, I'd kind of look. So, I guess, I spend a lot of time walking with my kids around town and have for my whole life, and my big skepticism with the Harbor Park Walkway has always been that, not so much that it wouldn't be better to get more people to walk down there, it's that can, is it an unattainable goal? Because the, especially with kids, and now that my kids are a little bit older, we, it's a little better, but this, it is so steep at, and it's, unfortunately, it's the steepest part is the-
Upper one.
Right at the top there, where it's the least possible to try to modify it. But, you know, if you're, you know, with a stroller or a wheelchair or anything, it's like you can get run away with, and it feels scary. And when the kids run down there, it feels scary a lot of the time. If we could do something, I don't know what we would do about that really steep, steep part of the top, but I, if you could use even the ledge, like, I don't know what that property owner, how they feel about saying, you know, if we had the walkway actually turn, so that it, whatever we could do to mitigate the steepness or to break it up, I liked your tiers, if you can-
So, here's, here's the deal. So, what we've got here is, there's a bunch of, you know, people have their buildings and the buildings, we have to have a space, this, this, this is a fixed thing, the door to the Seadog.
A fixed elevation.
It's a fixed thing, like, that's their basement. You can't go higher, you can't go lower, they've got to drag their stuff in.
Right.
This is the exit from the deck. It's almost invisible, but there's a door hidden in the lattice. This little line here is their foundation, like this, and so you don't want to bring the grade up over that, and in fact, the asphalt is a little bit up over their siding at this point. Then, this is fire escape that lands there. Obviously, they could probably cut the fire escape shorter, but you know, it's a manufactured thing, and so, how much do you mess with it? This building has the fire escape that's already set up to swing out and land at a certain spot when someone drops it.
Oh.
And then we've got window sills that are almost, oop, in, in the thing, so it's really, it's very tricky. TY Lynn showed tiers and steps, which you could figure out between the, this, along the length of this brick building.
Right, along that one, yeah.
You could probably do tiers and steps.
Yeah, yeah.
Or tiers and ramps.
Because in fill, in some way, that would respect the foundations and windows on either side. But once you hit the end of this building where the planter is, right there, you need to have it be a slope of asphalt because it's for the trucks.
Yeah.
So, the question is, we would love it. I'm not a landscape architect, nor do I play one on TV, and to really design something that would be nice here, we would need the select board to approve funds, to hire a landscape architect to make a design of tiers and steps.
Right.
This is just dealing with things as they exist.
Plus, do it even, because we want it to be handicapped accessible.
Plus, we have the complication, remember, of ADA compliance and the fact that the MDOT is putting this back generally the way it is.
Correct.
Which is one of the reasons we would like the opportunity to work with the town staff and even sit down to find out what an M, what the MDOT engineering can do, is willing to do, in light of the actual physical constraints we have, and constraint we have of, can't make it ADA compliant without running out to get the right slope, running out all the way into the parking area, so.
In the harbor.
In the water.
Yeah, into the water. So, what we're looking at is trying to take- Yeah, into the water. So what we're looking at is trying to take advantage of what we can do now to improve it, to make it more appealing to use, to, as I said, to get rid of that conflict. And what we would like to do is to work with Jeremy and Public Works and even sit down with the DOT if possible to talk about this in concept. And then even if, if we need to do it, to get an estimate for whatever engineering we would need to contribute to the MDOT taking this into consideration when they do their engineering. So we're presenting this as a concept of what we would like to do, but in order to really find out what's doable, we need to be able to sit down with Jeremy and even with David, Public Works, and, and be able to sit with DOT and the engineering and say, this is, these are our, this is our concept. How can your engineering accommodate this and what do our next steps need to be?
It sounds like it could cost a lot of money for not a very sure reason. I mean, how come we're not just trying to make it easier?
We have to talk to them first to find that out. We have to talk to an engineer to get an estimate of what an engineering design may be and then get an estimate of what that may cost.
But some things are just constraints. I mean, some things are just constraints. This has been studied fairly significantly. I mean, you guys, I know you're not a landscape architect, Meg, but you're really, you, they're very close to one. I feel like you are, I feel like it's not quite true that you're not one. So if it's, I'm trying to get to the point where I can see that it's possible to then understand. I don't think that we're going to hire some expert that is more certified than you are that is going to be able to come up with something totally different than you can think of right here. And maybe I'm giving you too much credit, but I, so I, I guess I just want to feel like it's like the slope is going to be enough that, like, why not put a bunch of money into making Commercial Street more walkable?
Well, Commercial Street's slope is approximately the same.
I want to hear, I want to hear from Mark and other board members.
I was going to say a couple of things. Number one, this is an opportunity we have right now. You know, sometimes if somebody wants, if they want to dig up Commercial Street, we can maybe do the same plan there. I've sat through the design meetings when Meg went through this, and I'm amazed at she's thought about the foundation, the access, the fire escapes on both sides of the street, studied how they work. I mean, it, you get to a point where you can only do so much, and I'm amazed at how good a plan this is based on the availability of, of access that we have. It's, it's, it's a terrific plan, I think, that, that works. That's not very expensive compared to, you know, the, the ADA thing cannot work. We can't change the slope to make it easier for kids, strollers, stuff like that. We, we just can't do it. There's, there's limitations in what we're able to do.
So I, I guess I don't understand. There's, we were talking about you getting, hiring somebody to come up with a plan to see what's possible, or are we talking about just replacing the pavement?
Our first step, what we would like is if just doing this, this simple design is appealing to the select board, we would like permission to go to Gartley and Dorsky and ask them how much it would cost to do an engineering design for this. They're going to tell us how much it would cost.
I think, I think, I think there's a little different procedure to it.
No, no, no. An engineering design for this is.
I know, I don't mean like that, but not, not with the, so my sort of pie in the sky, can we fix the slope issues with this tiered? We're saying, we're going to just think, not do that, but just.
Basically, Gartley and Dorsky would do a topo, which.
Right, turn your con, your concept into a.
Into an engineering drawing from which pricing could be done.
And actually, it's to get an estimate for them to do that for us.
I think that this is a good approach. I get all this, but it seems to me that this is, there is a cost benefit thing going on here without question. One cost benefit question is, would MDOT contribute anything other than the cost of the asphalt they would have to do to replace the asphalt that's there? That would be one thing they would do. Two, this is a concept, and it's a pretty decent concept description. You can, I believe strongly, you can get a ROM price on that right here from a competent contractor. Because they, random order magnitude estimate.
Wrong prices.
ROM, ROM, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think you could get a random order magnitude cost estimate on this. We're talking about a range. Is it 250,000? Is it 50,000? We're not, if, I get the go into engineering thing, you don't need to go there because engineers, trust me, we only muck things up and get it real confusing. So I think you can do that because what we're looking for is a go, no-go decision, right? Because if, if this, I'm exaggerating. If this is a million dollars, we ain't doing it.
Of course.
Right. It's not, by the way, it's not.
Yeah. We, we do want you to say, yeah, let's see what the next step would be. How can we get estimates? But I think it's also really important to sit down with DOT, with Jeremy and say, is this something you would be willing to work with? I think that has to be done before we get an estimate. Would DOT, and maybe DOT would say, you know, we can handle the engineering of this. I mean, so I think that conversation has to happen.
That's it. That's it.
That's right. Accommodation for electricity.
And that's noise in terms of cost. That's not very much at all. So I think, I agree that this. Yeah, I, I was trying to allude to two steps. One was MDOT, and the other one is a random order magnitude estimate. I just, I just don't really believe you want to go down there and engineer. Engineers input, fine, not engineering design. I don't think you need to.
Well, if, you know, if, if we are able to come up with those estimates and it sounds like something good, then maybe the DOT will say, we'll do the engineering.
Yeah, maybe.
Because we've got to engineer it anyway.
Maybe.
But I think we need to.
Don't they have to engineer it anyway? Isn't it just replacing the surface?
They have to, they have to, they have to engineer there.
Right.
Why don't I talk to them tomorrow, the DOT tomorrow, and just say, hey, we want to put some conduit in, and we want to do concrete, pour concrete on the top third. Can you put that in your plans? And they're going to spec it. My gut says is they'll spec it out.
Yeah, I think so.
But they also said, when we spoke with them at that last meeting, it was very much like, okay, Camden, you always do this. There's, every time we come and have a plan, you want to add all these things in, and you have a downtown master plan, and that's great, so we are going to work with you. But there's a limited number of things that they're willing to work with us. And so what we heard at that public meeting a lot was, or, I don't know, what, what I heard the most and what some people heard the most was the street tree thing of like, okay, and that's in the downtown master plan too. And so I thought we were, the idea was that we were going to really push hard to make sure that we got as many street trees in as possible tucked into this plan. And we were going to kind of, I, I just want to make sure that we don't use up our sort of political capital and other types of capital because we still don't have, we're still waiting on where to tell them to put the trees. And if you call them up tomorrow and say, well, we're going to do this.
I don't see this conflicting.
That's not true.
Just a couple of things. I'm wearing a couple of hats here, including this one. One is direct to your question. The work group did make, gave back to Jeremy and Bob proposed tree locations and bump outs and all the rest. We gave them a plan, hmm, seven, 10 days ago? Yeah. And there were questions about.
Property.
About whether MDOT would be willing, and Jeremy is looking into that.
Yep.
I had a nice talk with them before.
And Bob and Jeremy suggested that we do that as a first step before coming back to the select board. So we pushed as a work group and got that done.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm sorry. I can't wait to see the.
And generally, just to diffuse it a little bit, all of the trees that we recommended, almost all of them, 80 to 90 percent, were actually on the private property side, not built into the sidewalk. So there are actually discussions that we would have with the private landowners.
Oh, that sounds harder.
Actually, it might not be hard.
And just, just to.
If, if we can source the trees, and MDOT could be a source for those.
Just to preface this a little bit, we got the standards from DOT. So when the, the design team or the, the, the work group got together, we got the standards from DOT on what are the widths that you need, your sidewalks? How wide do they need to be without a tree in it? And then what do they need if we want to add a tree? So we got that. And then we sent that off to the work group, and the group, work group took that and then did their, came up with their recommendations. And much of it can work, but. Does that make sense? The issue is.
Makes sort of sense, but I had a.
I don't want to digress because we're focused.
Digressing.
We can do.
Digress on that. So that was just, I just wanted to put that out there. The second piece is, and, and you're right, Allison, people remember different things. One of the key things that I remember from that public meeting with MDOT, and I asked it twice, is they agreed to mitigate the slope of that, of the, that alley. They said that. They were going to even out the slope. And I don't know if they understood the ramifications of that because, Meg, you've done a lot more homework. So they may back off on that, but that's a great contribution to this project.
It is.
We specifically asked about the steepness.
Yeah, this, thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. We're really, really, we started talking about whether this would be a conflict or a problem with DOT. I don't see that. I, I think that we can, we can attack both the trees as, as an issue with them and not to worry. And, and then same thing, get their opinion on this alley if you want to cough with that.
Exactly.
So to the work plan for the design team, yeah, I think that I suggest that they look at, yeah, working with Jeremy to talk to MDOT in parallel, coming up with some kind of a random order of magnitude range of what.
Some estimates of the work that we want to do.
But to do that, you need to know what MDOT might be contributing.
Exactly, which is why we need to talk to MDOT first.
And I think that works, go, should go forward.
And I, I think the ultimate goal would be that if MDOT says, yes, we can accommodate, and we will work with you on one, two, three. It's up to the town to do four, four and five. Then we would get estimates on four and five, come to you and say, what we would like to do is to go through the budget process going forward. There's, you know, we have a downtown TIF. That's what those funds are for. We would like to go. So we have a number of steps, but ultimately, if signs are go, we would like to be able to go through a budget process in order to make it happen.
And I would suggest to the design team, when you go through the, after the process of talking with MDOT and company, after the process of doing the ROM, you come back to the select board and discuss status at that point. So we don't get too pregnant.
Right. So we don't get too far down the road, too invested. Absolutely.
Taylor, give a comment.
I was just going to agree with Bob's path forward. I think it, it's a, it's a no lose for us to at least make sure we don't have a missed opportunity with MDOT. And the alley has always seemed like such a no man's land to me. So if there's a way we can improve that and make it work, then I'd love to, yeah.
There is that cost benefit, and I, we get that.
Yeah, Jenna?
I just, I'll echo the two of, of Bob, Bob and Taylor and say, I actually was in the walkway, walked down there to the Historical Society booth at Windjammer Weekend and was thinking a little bit about this. And the design concept looks really nice, and I look, I think there's absolutely no harm in speaking with DOT, and I think it sounds like a good plan.
Ms. Ado, you haven't said anything.
Oh, I, I just wanted to add that it's very easy and typically that local engineering firms will give us a cost estimate for free. And we've received one before for Harbor Walkway. It was different than what's being proposed here, but.
Yeah, we have one from 2017, I think, and we would alter the components of that next time around.
That's an easy.
So I think you have clear marching orders on your work plan?
We have marching orders on two projects.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for your, thank you for your feedback. That's important to us.
I need to list his comments on the work plan. I'm not going to take any more comments from the public. Do you have any more comments on their work plan, what they're doing? A and B, not X. You should bring that.
Meg can answer that.
I can answer that. And in fact, I, I'll just show you on my model. Ooh, so let's see if I can bring my, my, my model. I can't rotate my model without my mouse. It's all very annoying, but it's the.
The other question is whether.
The answer's no, and I'll show you why. Okay, so I was originally a huge proponent.
I know you were.
Of railings, and I wanted to have a railing that had an LED strip built into the thing. So it's like, like foot lighting at a movie theater. It was going to be great. And then I was stymied, and I'll show you why. Okay.
These designers.
Okay.
I like you here, Meg. I like this.
I know, it was exciting.
Harbor Walkway. Now, let's see if I can make this happen here. It's going to take a minute to.
No, it didn't get it.
Oh, it didn't get it. Okay, here. Here we go. We don't want, now it's opening it twice.
Yep.
Hang on. No.
There you go.
Okay. Is this cool or what? Okay, so.
I don't see any handrails.
Actually, if I move my computer over here so I can have a place for my mouse.
Hold on, how is it that you're not a landscape architect? I'm confused by those statements.
Educated.
But this looks like landscapes and.
No.
I mean.
They're buildings. It's buildings. So, whoa, we're going to.
Spin around.
But this is awesome that you do this.
Whoa, look at the alley. Oh, look at the hipster in the alley.
This would cost us so much money if we hired somebody to do it.
You know it would. Okay. So what I want you to focus on is this, this fire escape here. That sticks out about three feet.
Right.
Then you think, oh, I've got all the space. I could like have a railing, do, do, do. Except we've got this light well here for under here. Okay, so now the railing's moved out.
What's a light well?
You know, let's lay it into the basement window.
Down below grade.
Yeah, okay.
Then this fire escape here, this has an arm that swings out like this.
And down.
So let me get this passage. That's the swing of this thing, okay?
It'd kill somebody with that thing.
So, yeah, you could. Oh, come on.
Maybe we need to redesign the fire escapes on those buildings. They're part of what.
So anyway, see these little pickets here?
Yep.
These little pickets, this picket is clearly, is, this line is the line of the stair fire escape. This line is three feet high, clearing the swinging thing. So if you're going to have a railing, it could be here, or it could be here. But the problem is, they're kind of in the middle of things because the town plows this with the mini snow plow.
Does.
So if you want to have a railing, which you could put down the middle, you would have to decide you don't want to like plow it anymore in the winter kind of thing.
One more complication. The deed granting this, granting to the town in the right of way, it must be kept clear. So putting in a permanent railing down the middle of that property would probably not match the requirement of the right of way and the deed.
Who grants us that? Which?
The property owner back in 1920 something.
They want.
They own it. They, yeah, they own that property, but the original deed dates back whenever the public landing was given to the town.
Thank you. To Mark's point, anybody has any comments like this, bring it to the design team then. More than willing to sit and discuss it. It is a great job. Thank you so much.
Okay, okay, but I have a work plan related question.
Oh, the flowers.
That's not related to this. So that's the perfect, this is the perfect time, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so.
No.
No flowers.
No flowers. And just also thank you. This is great, and it's really fun having this here. It makes me want to go to a design team meeting, so. But one thing I think that the, the design team could help us with would be the downtown master plan. And I know that for all of us, we've been involved in town government to varying degrees at different times over the years. And just because we've lived here our whole lives doesn't mean that we know the history of what's been looked at and where, how we got where we are. And it feels like especially the people on the design team, a lot, there's a lot of overlap with being really involved, I think, in the downtown master plan development or at least in understanding it. So I think it would be, I know I push back a lot on things, but it's also, I've looked at that thing a lot. I scanned the whole thing to make it keyword searchable so that I could, it would be easier to, you know, find relevant things. And I noticed that, you know, it doesn't have any mention of climate change, is not mentioned anywhere, sea level rise, all of this stuff. But, so I think there are maybe some things that could be updated in there, but also it would just be. that could be updated in there. But also, it would just be really nice to have one, you know, one of these presentations that we have during select board time could just be the history of the downtown master plan and associated relevant items that I, I would just like to hear, you know, the TY LIN stuff, the Riverwalk stuff even. I think every so often, we kind of need a history lesson of what has been looked at. Because before you know it, we start proposing, oh, we should study this, or we should study that. And it's amazing what's already out there. I know we have, I have, you know, problems with the ledge and the TY LIN thing, but there's also a lot of really good stuff. And I would just like to request like an actual, just a lesson from, on the past.
Well, I think, and I think that could be helpful, not just to you guys, but to the general public-
For the public, yeah.
-to do that from time to time. I mean, Jeff Scott and Anita in the pathways committee, there's a pathways master plan that was, precedes our downtown master plan by I don't know how many years. But that is also something that could be, you know, maybe if it's a 15-minute lesson on this portion of it. But that's something that could be very helpful. The Riverwalk, I mean, that's all sort of an outgrowth of some of that. But I think that's a good idea. We can talk about, you know, what we might, might contribute to doing that. Certainly, the downtown master plan is a PDF. But I think it also ought to dovetail a bit about what your priorities are. So you can see if there are things that you have priorities that you're thinking about-
Yes.
Ground them in the work that's been done in the past. And then so, yes, there isn't climate change. It's not climate change in the comp plan either, which is an issue. But I think if there are things that you are concerned about, that you're thinking of tackling, that would be the appropriate time to talk about some of the history, rather than just picking Chapter 3A and let's talk about that tonight. It needs to be related to something you're interested in and you're working on, I think.
Well, I mean, I guess I think also what you're, because we saw with the parking lot, that was an example of an area where it's in the plan, a lot of people had put time into, you know, the parking lot was seen as a way of achieving something that we had already agreed on. But then other people, like, you know, me and Jenna and whoever else were like, hold on, what? What is this? And they're, so I guess I would like to also know the people that have been most involved in crafting this. It's important to me to know what you guys think also about the general broad overview, not just like picking, well, I'm interested in streetlights today, or I'm interested in this, so Deb, tell me what the downtown master plan says about that. But all, but just, you know, even the public landing, the-
The studies that have been done.
Yeah, the studies that have been done. And what, I think it matters what you guys think is important from like a broad perspective as well.
Mark, you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I have been going to the design team meetings before they were an official town committee. And one of the things I try to remember about the select board is, we've been successful in running for office, which is a job in itself. But it doesn't mean that, I always try to remember that I, if I start off with thinking when I go to meetings that I don't know anything and I'm here to learn, especially at this committee or team, the professional opinions that are given and what I learn from going to the meetings is extraordinary. And has been for, you know, all the years I've been going to the meetings. And so thank you for Rafi, Deb, and Meg for being here tonight and all the other people that are on the committee, because it's a great experience to go and learn and to see the work and dedication they put into it and the professional experience they bring to it. And I think that's, we owe everybody a big thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Deb, do you feel you have a clear understanding of what Allison's referring to in terms of this history, so you can add that to the work?
So we can talk about-
If there's any questions, any questions, bring it back. Because I think there is tons of history that is really nice to note, but categorically, not every paragraph and every, you know. Anita?
My comment, the question dovetails with where the discussion is at this point. It's more general sort of overview. I would be very interested in hearing the select board and town manager say in a meeting openly why a, why you're not willing to have an overall design done for the, for the section that the DOT is involved with, for the section that we're talking about, have that hire a professional to make a plan, if I may just finish-
Noel, because we've been, we've been at 40 minutes on this. And we set a process to go forward to get to that point, where we don't need to make a go or no-go decision on what you're asking, what I'm hearing right now.
What is she asking?
Asking why we're not giving-
Harbor Walkway?
No, she's talking about the alley.
I'm asking for an overall plan by a professional. I don't mean to say that Meg's not a professional or that you aren't professionals, but-
About the alley.
Harbor Walkway.
I have often heard, we need to do this as inexpensively as possible, or I've also heard, we want to do it, we want to use the free expertise we have and not get others involved and not pay money. I know the town is willing to spend money on important things, on consultants when that's necessary. And I just, I'm keenly aware that there are two blocks in downtown that are our, are the biggest asset that we have, where people come, where visitors come, where they frequent. And I'm also keenly aware that Belfast and Rockland, that downtown sidewalk in Rockland was not designed by a committee, I guarantee you.
Yep.
I don't understand what you think we're saying no to.
Yeah, I don't understand it either.
I don't, I feel that you are not-
You're completely wrong.
Well, I don't see where the element of having, having an overall cohesive design done is part of your picture.
We just, we said we're just not at that point yet. We just, we're not, we're not, we, they've got direction to take it to the next steps so we can make logical decisions in this process, and that's where we're going to go.
I don't think I understand. What do you, what?
Just design it. Design it now.
What, that Harbor Park Walkway?
The Walkway is part of the plan.
Is it all about the walkway for you?
The whole landing?
The Walkway is part of this cohesive plan. It's not, it's, we're just putting pieces in here and there and designing them separate from everything else.
Sorry, I don't understand either.
I don't understand either.
Instead of a cohesive plan for everything-
Every what?
Just what the Riverwalk, public landing.
You mean the Riverwalk?
That was.
Is the downtown master plan.
That was.
Cut it off.
That does a little.
Yeah. I don't, do you think you got a no? What do you think we said no to tonight?
I don't know what you think we said no to. We didn't say no to anything. We're doing, going through a process of looking at the alley. I call it the alley. The Harbor Walkway.
I think maybe the confusion came in just, in just asking, the suggestion of asking the DOT about their potential for giving us some expertise and involvement, that I don't think that that excluded any design, future design or engineering. I think it was just kind of a first step and a logical one by consensus, I felt.
I think we've been pretty clear on what we're going to do with the next steps in the work plan. And I, we'll pick up later, Anita. I think you're a little confused with what we said. We didn't say no to anything. We're just going through a process to get to a point where this project makes good sense in its design, in its relative costs, including input from MDOT. That's, it's stepwise. We'll get to that point, I think you're talking about.
I think it's important to remember that this project is starting next October, right? And runs through June.
Yeah.
And it's going out to bid likely in the springtime.
Probably.
And all that we're asking for, that what the group is asking for today-
Yep.
-that I'm aware of is just to make sure we get DOT to understand we would like a new, a different surface on the top third, as opposed to the pavement that they're going to put in, and put conduit in. So that when we have a bigger plan in the future for the landing and everywhere else to tie things together, we'll have conduit and infrastructure in place so that we can say, oh, yep, let's, let's put some new lights there that match our existing lights. I mean, that's how I see it. I mean, I can appreciate what Anita's saying. But I think in this case, it's really about just the surface of the material-
Right.
-and the conduit.
Right.
If I may, I'd like to speak to both what Allison and Anita were saying. So this is my view of the downtown master plan. The downtown master plan is that plan that looks at the totality of downtown. The TY LIN did. But a lot of what they did, as is pointed out by Allison, with the ledge and the steepness where they proposed parking, it's a bit what I would call eye wash. That's an architectural term of like, this is a concept, and we really haven't worked out the nitty gritty, you know, of the details. And so what the design team is doing is taking the downtown master plan and addressing specific issues in the context of the downtown master plan. And one of the items on the downtown master plan is improving Harbor Walkway. And if I, everyone is going to look at the downtown master plan with a different hat, but when I see the downtown master plan, what I think it's a document dealing with is making campus more attractive and pedestrian friendly and avoiding pedestrian vehicle conflicts, of which we have a lot, that basically the town developed over time and decisions were made that may not be the wisest when thinking about how people and automobile and so. So the downtown, a lot of what it has is dealing with that issue.
So great. And if you could just even for, like, I think, I think a lot just basic explanation hasn't been in. We're not all just there. And-
Really helpful to have us sort of go through, go through it and say, why, you know, if we're trying to avoid action with cars, then why is parking in the, on the public landing after the-